Before we start the meeting, Melinda McCray will offer the credit.
Dear Lord, we thank you for the staff and your many blessings to us. And we ask your guidance as we make decisions today. And Lord, we ask your guidance for our president and for our senate, our congress, Lord, for our country. We lift it up to you. We know that through you, all things are possible. And we ask you to restore the blessings to our country. And we thank you for what you've already done for us in Jesus' name.
First order of business is to review the agenda. Starts out with the adoption of the agenda, the approval. Second item is approval of minutes from the September 11th meeting. We have some presentation, Title I schools' CIP plans. Four is review financial bank statements. Five is approve payroll and payments. Six, approve local school payments. Seven is Hamilton Arts Council. Eight, permission for UN elementary schools after-school program. Nine, permission to seek bids on a mobile unit. Ten is approved naming of Marion County High School library. Seven is permission to enter into a contract for substitute teachers. Twelve, approve policy revisions. Thirteen, permission to renew the MAC program. Fourteen, select delegate to attend the Alabama Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly. Fifteen, approve volunteers. Sixteen, approve school trips. Seventeen, personnel.
Mr. President, I do not have anything else to add to the agenda. And I would recommend that you approve the agenda as presented.
Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll say.
If the board makes the motion, Ms. McCray makes the second. All in favor, please vote. All vote. I approve. Next item is approve the minutes September 11th.
Melinda mailed you a copy of those. You've had a chance to review those. And I think you've had one of your practice this morning as well. Are there any questions on the minutes from September the 11th? If not, Mr. President, I would recommend that you approve the minutes of the September 11th, 2013 meeting.
Ask for a motion to approve these minutes. Rodney makes the motion to approve second. It's got to be Fowler's second. All in favor? All vote. I...item is approved. Minutes are approved. Next is the presentation of Title I schools' continuous improvement plans.
We have our Title I principals here with us this morning. And they're going to present their continuous improvement plan to you. And at the conclusion of all of those, we'll need board approval on those. So if you have any questions, certainly they'll ask for those during their presentation. Dr. Armstrong, if you'd start us off.
Good morning. I'll give you just a little bit of background on our enrollment at this time. We have 672 students enrolled at this time. We have 71 employees on our campus. We have 22 EL students that we're serving. Our strengths that we had after looking at our CIP, 94% of our fourth grade students tested score level three or four in math, and that was out of 141 students. We tested 151 students in kindergarten on the DIBELS and 97% benchmarked. 97% of our parents feel they were kept informed about their child's progress. 98% of parents stated they were given a copy of the Marion County handbook. 95% of our students are satisfied with the instruction that their children are receiving at our school. Our weakness is our fourth grade math students scored 38% correct on recognizing equivalent forms of fractions and decimals. 25% of third grade students did not benchmark on the DIBELS. And we also think that we need an after-school reading and math tutoring program. Several of the things that we're going to work on. This school year is comprehension. We have a variety of activities and things that you can see. We have new success maker that we're using in our title program. We're very pleased with that at this time. We're working on problem solving, modeling fractions, and remediation on math. With our EL students that we're working with at this time, we're currently working on goal setting with them. And we're having meetings with our teachers that are teaching EL students to do that. Also, we're staying current with school safety. We still continue to work on that. And we are implementing the RTI program. I'm very pleased with our RTI program at this time. We're having meetings today, we mentioned yesterday. A lot of progress that we're seeing, and I think we're right where we need to be with our RTI program. You have any question? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Armstrong. And when you finish that, you know, if you need to leave, I suppose, you're welcome to...you're welcome to stay for the whole meeting. I know you have a lot going on. Mr. Devers?
First of all, I'd like to thank the board for our recent improvements at the middle school. One of our goals we addressed is safety. And we have new doors around the building now. All that panic hardware, we certainly appreciate that. It's been a tremendous help for the safety of our kids. And I just want to thank you for that. Now, any parent has to be buzzed in our school. And I think the parents appreciate it also. Just like to say thank you. Some of the strengths, as noted on our school data from last year, 98% of our sixth grade reading students scored proficient in levels three and four in reading, which was tremendous. I think that's the highest score we've ever had in reading in our school. Weakness was 21% of our eighth grade students scored level two in math. So that's something we're going to continue to work on. Another goal that we're really going to work hard on this year is our attendance rate. Last year, we were right at 95%. We want to improve that. That is one of our...it's very important because it's going to be part of our school performance index this year, which our school will be graded upon. And that's going to be very, very important. So we're stressing attendance out here. And hopefully, so far, our students have responded really well to that.
Let me interrupt you there because I just want to make sure. Used to, our attendance rate for our schools were determined on the 20 days after Labor Day, you know, the percentage of attendance. Now, it's going to be on all 180 days in the entire year. So, you know, as you get into the winter and the spring and having flu season and all those type things, you know, we're very concerned in...as all the systems in the state are concerned about our overall attendance rate.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that. And that's our...our other two goals is besides reading and math, those are two really...the two biggest goals we're concentrating on is our safety and our attendance. And I appreciate everything out there coming to the school.
Any questions for Mr. Devers? Who's come over and approved? Okay, you, you're okay.
First, I thank y'all, this one ladies and gentlemen. We appreciate...I'd like to repeat what Mr. Devers said. Really appreciate the doors and having pick for the buttons so that we can push a button that people can see where it is. That's a big safety issue for us at all schools. We really appreciate everything the board does for us. In developing their plan, of course, it was developed by a variety of teachers, parent representatives involved also in their plan. And looking at their plan, we focused on their assessments. We got from ARC scores, Alabama reading math, Maddox test. At total elementary, we had a...excuse me, our score was in third grade in math was 100% proficient last year. They had 96 proficiency in reading in third grade. Fourth grade was 90% in math, reading 94% in reading proficiency in fourth grade. Fifth grade was 98% proficient in math and 95 proficiency in reading. Sixth grade was 84% in reading and math proficient, which made...looking at their strength, of course, third grade was a strength with the math by far. And looking at why it was a strength, there's a variety of things. One thing, the teacher in that classroom threw a grant for RCD, received a SMARTboard. And the technology itself does it improve learning, but it motivates children, how the teacher used it. The staff members, Ms. Cohen was very motivational with the technology and other materials in the room. And also, she taught to Padobi her tier instruction. But that really was a main thing that she did that I observed. Of course, other things that we use AMSTY. AMSTY has been very good to give professional development. Also, this year, Ms. Council organized AMSTY to have a parent tonight to come up and understand, they helped them to understand a new math concept. And of course, we use also a variety of other assessments like Star, even Star Math for assessment during data meetings and teacher information. Our action...I'm sorry, our weakness is, again, attendance is one of our major weaknesses. We did not make 95% proficiency in attendance last year. That in part is a check out. That's from our focuses this year. And also in comprehension and vocabulary, a lot of that has to do with the new math concepts, new vocabulary, lower level students especially. And that's our focus this year to try to get them used to the new terms, new vocabulary. Our action plan is to encourage attendance. We provide students with GOTCHI tickets. And we also do that with behavior and positive behavior support. And teachers have a variety of incentives for students who doesn't miss more than X number of days in 30-day time period. And if they do, some things would do, it's going by county policy. And I'll ask parents to come and meet with me after it extends eight days. I'll send them a letter out and talk to me about that. Before, I have to send them a district code and hope they won't get to that place. But the main focus we're doing on instruction is we're looking at intensive, explicit instruction through a tiered instruction program. Tiered instruction was chosen with RTI, Dr. Armstrong mentioned. Focus on the core was a tier one in a small group. Our tier two, which is our intervention. And we're going over this, we have new staff members and also retooling staff members who've already been through training because sometimes we get complacent. And through observations, I...we felt like that was a good place to start back with the basics and make sure we're following through all their tiered instruction. And also tier three, which is a different person, personnel, staff members focusing with us kids during that time. We have training, upcoming training on comprehension in two tiers, also for teachers. It's coming next, early next month. And of course, as I mentioned, we use our assessment by the STAR during our data meetings, ARCA meetings. Teacher, also teacher input. Teachers had a lot of input on that. Give you example, meeting, we had some students was trying to...they were tier three students. One student acted by the score on one test showed that it should be, but that another student was real close. And the teacher explained that this child has taken fifth anxieties. And the other graded material she gave him was much higher. And therefore, using all assessment, not just one, it helps us determine which children will they receive a tier for instruction. But the best resource that we have, of course, we use, I've left out programs like IXL, Slum Dog, Slum Dog, Star Call, reading, study islands, spell study where our students will remediate. But the best resource that we have for our students is classroom teacher and their motivation tools. So we want to get them as trained and equipped as possible for this extra intervention for these students because that's what's going to show the most progress of students, that are students. Ladies and gentlemen, have any questions?
I think Rip, one of the most important things he said was training of the staff in professional development. And as you well know, the state provides zero dollars for that and has funded that at zero for the last few years. Thank you, Mr. Rick. Mr. Carter?
Mr. Hollingsworth, members of the board. It's my privilege to speak here today on behalf of Bree Elementary School. We have an excellent staff at Bree and have an excellent board member, Ms. Paulson. I'd like to begin by saying, as you know, we are under Saks accreditation review this year. So our CIP was done online under the new ACIP program. And I print it, it'd been about 100 pages, so.
We thank you for that.
But I will post it on our website. You're welcome to go there and read it. Our goals for this coming year, our weaknesses, we felt like, you know, overall, our test scores were good. But with the new ASPIRE test coming and proficiency being a level four, where in the past on ARC it was a level three, we feel like we need to focus on improving reading skills throughout each grade level. And some of our strategies that we're going to use for that, we're going to encompass active engagement. We're going to use Jigsaw method that our reading coaches, our instructional coaches have been trained on by our regional reading coach, Ms. Penley. We're going to use different fluency strategies. Teachers are going to use phrasing. They're going to choose a list of words to review. Students are...have mastered those words, teacher will be putting those into phrases. And we're also going to use computer reading programs. We're requiring our students in each class, each grade to read four books for accelerated reader, check them out through the library, and they're getting a grade for reading for that. And also, we have a new STRIDE Academy program, which is a program that used to be a kids' college. It's funded by class, and we use that for reading as well as math. We have scheduled computer time, and our teachers take our kids to the lab, and they use that often. And our kids really love it because they're using it at home. And we get reports often from the lady that set that up and tells us how much that our kids have actually been using at this school and real well. Another one of our goals is parental involvement. You know, if we get our parents involved, we feel like our test scores are going to come up even further. And the ways that we're doing it, we invited all our parents to an open house at the start of the year. We also had an AMSTY night, which Ms. Council put together, where the people from AMSTY came to our school and showed our parents how our kids are learning math under the new Alabama College Career Area Standards. Got that right, right?
Yes, sir.
Also, we had a grandparent lunch and a book fair. We had about 100 grandparents show up for that. So we were fortunate to have that happen. We're hopeful to have another one of those in the spring. And we're also, we brought back our Fall Festival this year. We'll be having, we hope to have a lot of people come out for that. All right, another goal that we have, we want to improve math skills in all grades. We don't feel like they're where they need to be. And again, you know, with level four being proficient now, we constantly want to do that. The way we're going to do that, we're going to use AMSTY manipulatives. We're going to teach our kids to problem solve better and encourage them to use their own thinking. Again, we're going to incorporate technology. All of our teachers now have SMARTboards. Also, with the new STRIDE Academy program, what that STRIDE Academy does, it puts a kid on their grade level. If they're below grade level, it moves them down. And if they're accelerated, it moves them up. So we use that for differentiated instruction. And then we want our kids to self-assess. We're going to teach them how to do that. Any question?
I'd like to commend Carter for having 100 grandparents in this school for Luncia Day. That's an outstanding turnout. And I know that it's...your halls were full.
But Ms. Freed's had a great book fair. You could have moved in that library and there's one there. You know, they get grandparents to buy anything.
Oh, sure. I am one.
You are one, I am one. That's right.
Mr. Wesley?
I thought about saying, Mr. Freed, fill in for my time if it was all right. I just got a short kind of snapshot of our staff people in. A few of our...first of all, I want to thank the board, Mr. Hollingsworth, and Anne and them for giving me this opportunity to be the principal of UN Elementary School. I do appreciate it. It's the first time I've had you all together to thank you for that. So just want to thank you for that opportunity. We've got a few of our strengths listed here. Our math scores, we had only 25% of our students in grades three through six scored below level four on the 2013 spring assessment math. And I was talking to my reading coach, and she said, yeah, you need to do this because it's bragging on us a little bit. We were proud of that because we had the top scores in three of the four categories in level fours in the county, so we're really proud of that. Also, in reading, we only had 17% of the students in grades three through six who scored below level four in reading. We had the top scores in four of the four categories countywide in level four. We also, our fifth grade students performed at 100% proficiency in math on the spring assessment, so we're really proud of those scores. We've got a few weaknesses, one of them being 100% of our non-proficient students were males. That's a little concerning to me. So I'm personally going to try to start meeting, well, meeting with these kids about every other week and bring them mentors. And we're going to go over remedial programs for these students too. But doing a little more research on these kids, there are some underlying factors like broken homes, living in the projects. And I kind of call it getting it out of the project mindset. I want them to think that they can do more than they really are. So I'm trying to personally address that with some help and some mentor. Weakness number two, some students lack motivation and demonstrate low self-esteem. That can indicate that 60% of our office referrals were from upper grades, 24% resulted in out of school suspensions. So what we're going to do to try to counteract that is increase student opportunities for leadership, emphasis on affective work habits, like the principal said about the tardies and the absenteeism, we're going to address that. We would like to reduce our office referrals in grades four through six at 30%. We would also try to attain 95% student attendance. Strategies faculty and staff are currently being trained in the leader and me program, transferring the traits of the leader to the students is the ultimate goal. Also, our council will have individualized sessions with some of these students. Weakness three, although our scores were proficient for 2012 and 13 school year, we recognize that if we don't address the higher standard expected for this year, we will not be able to maintain this level of proficiency. So our goal, even though it doesn't sound like much, when you have three and fours, and this year we're having it strictly fours, we're going to at least try to maintain and add a little to that. This low increase in percentages due to the proficiency level not being established for the new assessment. However, we do know that the standards will be harder to achieve. Our strategies for doing that, our teachers will identify the students who did not score level four. Lessons will incorporate student engagement strategies such as listening, writing, and partner talking. And we'll be using technology to teach and assess these students. Any questions? The grades that were not, they're being trained right now. So hopefully, we'll be there shortly.
Well, when you sit on the back, that's what you get.
I know. That's the back. I can just say ditto to everything because everybody's covered everything. But first, I'd like to say thank you for allowing us to be able to come today. And if you have not been, the hack of work lately, there's a lot going on up there, and we're so excited. We have blocks. We have walls. We have concrete. We went over there yesterday afternoon, and there are a few rooms that you can tell the structure of the rooms. And we were over there after hours because we didn't have our hard hat on. But it's really nice. And it's getting...while we were out there during that time, there were several parents that drove by just then. It was probably about 6 o'clock when we were out there. So there were several parents that came by during that time. It's exciting to go by every other day at least because they have two or three more walls up during that time. So we've got the elementary end. It looks like the walls are up on the elementary end on the bottom floor. And then the concrete and stuff on the senior, the high school land. As most everybody has already said, because of the data from our previous improvement plans, have been data from your ARC scores? Well, we have ARCs no more. So we're going to be having the ASPIRE test. We don't really know what to look for. I mean, what we're going to be judging on this year, this is going to be our benchmark year. And so, as Josh said, the level threes, we had a lot of level threes, but we're going to have to strive to have more level fours. Our threes and fours were 88% in reading and 89% in math, but we're going to have to strive for fours. And so, everybody, your average kids, your above-average kids, we're going to have to bump it up a little bit. It seems like a lot of times we focus on your at-risk students, but we're going to have to really bump it up with everybody, all children across the board. Some of the outlines that I've given you is kind of just some of our strategies. The main goal in reading is we're going to increase fours and in math, we're going to increase fours. We had with our ARC scores, comprehension was a big area that we were concerned with. And that is a harder skill. It seems like over the years with our DIBELS and things, we've pushed trying to get the children to learn to read, to read, to read, fast. Well, that's not it. We've got to read and understand all reading. And so comprehension is a big part. And that's one of the things that teachers are going to be working on with the children is to learn, to be able to comprehend what they read. Also, another part of our new standards, and can I get by with the extra homeworks? Just the new standards? Is writing. And that's a big part of the reading. I know as a former instructional coach, we have kind of let that go by the wayside as far as the writing part. And that's a big part of the new standards is writing. That's one of the things that they say the children get in high school and they're not able to write stories. So today, our instructional coach was meeting with each teacher during the...that's one of the things that we do during our planning time. Once a week, we plan, we have a data meeting. If it's not data, it's grade level or it's an RTI meeting. So every week, the teachers meet with the coach, and we go over things that we've learned here with Paul up here at our regional coach, something to share to the teachers. Mr. Hollingsworth said, we don't have a lot of money for trainees. And so our trainees are really done locally. And so this helps our teachers. Right now, because of the new standards in math last year, and now this year, the new standards in language arts, we are doing a lot of...we've got the standards, but now we've got to go back and dig and see what they really mean. We can all read it, but what does it really mean? So that's what our instructional coach is going over with our teachers to go, not so much as so broad, but get deep into it. Take those standards, take them across the curriculums in science and social studies. If it is a reading skill for main idea, take it into science, take it into social studies, and do the main idea of what your content is in that area. We have...one of our things that we're working on, our steps, is on comprehension and reading. And we have a way to do that is through strategic activities. And that's a big thing through our ARI initiative program is for the teachers to be able to... And that's a big thing through our ARI initiative program is for the teachers to be able to, be able to work and do lesson plans. And they're very in-depth lesson plans and they take a long time. So our teachers are having to spend a great deal of time working and doing strategic teaching. A lot of our work now, especially in our mobile units, it's hard to do some of the grouping that they want us to do, but we're doing it as best we can. And it's having the kids take control of the classroom lessons. Instead of the teacher having to stand up there and do instructor or lecture all day, the teachers, the students take part in each lesson. An RTI area that we're going to be working on, we have, the end of last year, we had nineteen students in RTI. At the beginning of this year, because of some of the students going to high school, we dismissed some of the students. Some of the students have placed for special ed. We have thirteen students right now in RTI. And these are the children that a lot of times do not have any encouragement or motivation at home. They are repeated students. And so we have decided this year we're gonna have a mentor program. And a teacher, another teacher is going to be assigned to those students just to be able to meet with them two or three times a week and have a little encouragement. Say, you know, you have a test this week, have you studied, you know, can I help you do something? We have cited some of the older students. We may have some of the teachers that, you know, they bonded with a little bit, they had some connection. And we just feel like those students really need a little bit of encouragement, maybe all they do need. And so that's the area in RTI that we're gonna be working on this year. Also, when we looked at our data from our art, our math fractions across the board, every grade was low in fractions. And I can understand that fractions are hard for a lot, probably hard for me to understand. But you can interpret it in lower grades, you have to be able to, in the upper grades, work with decimals and fractions, and that's one of the areas. So in math, we've been working with fractions, trying to beef that up a little bit. Any questions?
Did you say Paula helped you a little bit?
She has, she helped us a lot.
Well, on a scale of one to ten, which would you give?
I would give Paula a ten plus.
Very good.
Any, any questions on any of the CIP plans that were presented? That's fine.
Mr. President, I'd recommend that you approve the Title I CIPs as presented.
Okay, so the superintendent recommends approval for these plans and entertain a motion to do so.
I'll make that one.
So Paula makes the motion. Ms. McRae makes the second. All in favor please. All vote out. Next is our financial bank statements.
Mr. Green has a copy of those and they are available for your review today and any other day. And Mr. President, there's no action needed, don't call that out.
Okay, moving along to approve payroll and payments.
Mr. Green, you have a, hold there.
September payroll was one million eight seventy-three, one ninety-one and forty-one cents. I expect October payroll to line up about the same, about one point nine million dollars. AP, because the Hackleburg project has grown considerably, total AP for the month of September was one million seven seventy-three, two seventy-seven, ninety-two. Of that, one point one oh six million was directly related to Hackleburg.
Going forward, we expect the monthly AP for Hackleburg to exceed a million dollars. There's a lot, as Ms. Palmer explained, there's a lot going on, purchasing materials and labor. So we're expecting some rather large invoices to be coming in. And currently, you know, we paid those out of insurance receipts. And the risk management has not sent us all of our insurance funds at this point as they close the year out. But we've been in communication with them and expecting receipt of more funds here this month that will be covering our expenses for the project. Any questions on our payroll and payments? If not, Mr. President, I'd recommend that you approve the payroll and payments for October.
Superintendent recommends that we approve these payroll, payroll and payments. I'll make the motion. Ms. Fleming makes the motion to approve. For some seconds, that motion, all in favor, please. Payroll will die and is approved. Next is local school payments.
You have a handout, front and back, broken down by school and the date. And the request for the payment to be made and a brief explanation in the far right column. I'll give you just a minute to look over those. Any questions on those? Not, Mr. President, I'd recommend that you approve the local school payment request according to your handout.
Okay, superintendent recommends approval for these local school payments. Make your motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. McRae makes the motion to approve, second.
I'll second.
Ms. Ross makes the second. All members vote now, please. All vote out, is approved. Next on the agenda is Hamilton Arts Council.
We have some people, young ladies here this morning.
I wanna thank you. I'm Judy Miller, I'm also an employee at Hackleburg High School and Phillips High School. And also the president of the Northwest Alabama Art Council. So I'm kind of wearing two hats today. I wanna pass this out and it won't take just a few minutes. And Carrie Bolton is with me and she is the past president. And she's holding my hand, I guess, today. We're really excited. We are gonna be putting with the Northwest Fifth Bevel in partnership with us. We are going to be presenting the Nutcracker. The Nutcracker is gonna be something that this community has not had anything like this because it's gonna be very professional. We have a budget that is right now at twenty thousand, so we are really, it's gonna be a big production. And we would like to come and invite the school systems. This will be an opportunity for field trips. I'm right now working on lesson plans that teachers can incorporate this into their classroom. And I will have lesson plans available that they can email me starting in November, by second week of November, I should have them completed. And they can use this as part of their history, they can use it into their music, they can use it into their art programs. But the Nutcracker actually started, and I taught music appreciation, now I may have my date wrong because it's been a long time, a few years since I taught it. But the Nutcracker first, I think it was in the eighteen hundreds, and I believe if I can remember, it was eighteen ninety-two. And it was a wonderful opera performance during that time. And it has been strong since the eighteen hundreds. And this is a great opportunity for our students to be able to go. We're gonna have two matinees and the cost will be five dollars. Now, I have not got this out to the school system, but we know No Child Left Behind, that every child in the school, you take your class on a field trip, every child should be able to go on that field trip. We're gonna have some corporate sponsors that will help sponsor that child that cannot pay that five dollars. You know, if a teacher has a child in their classroom that cannot afford that five dollars for their ticket, the Arts Council is gonna have some corporate sponsors that will help sponsor that child to be able to go. So we want every child to have the opportunity, if the teacher would like to bring them. You know, but there's two matinees that's on this lesson. With your, you know, blessing and approval, we would like to shoot this out to the principals to get this to, you know, the teachers that they would like to offer. And this will go to all the schools in the county. Is there any questions? And we have twenty-five students also from this county that is in the production. And I know it's up to each individual principal about excuse absence during the study and making up work and all that. But I've left this information with Mr. Hollingsworth to look over. I've got him a list of the students that are gonna be involved. And I know one student talked to him yesterday, said she's already got her blessing from her principal. Of course, with makeup work, you know, she's responsible for all her makeup work and everything else. So I realize that will be up to each individual principal, am I right on that? So, but I do have a list of the twenty, I think there's twenty-five in our system. There's a couple, I think, in the Winfield system, we have one in the Hable system. And it's kind of broad, you know, there's sixty-three in the cast, actually, that's gonna be in the Nutcracker. But I think we have the biggest majority, I think we have twenty-five in Marion County's system.
We certainly want to thank Arts Council for this huge effort. Because I have no idea how big it is, but it's been working for this long. I know it's a fantastic opportunity for our students to go to here locally and also to participate in, so.
Right, because we've already got schools contacting us a lot from the Florence area, it's already starting to get hooked. So I would like to, you know, if we can get this out, you know, to ours. I would like our system to have first opportunity.
We would like to send this out to our schools first.
I do know some schools from Florence has already contacted.
And I would expect the schools to have, you know, students participating, you would treat them the same way probably. Anyway, yes, certainly, go ahead and send that out to our students. And that's, the principals will then go through the process to submit a field trip request here to this office. So they need to get, they need to get going with that because it's.
Okay, I'll shoot it out this afternoon. I'll go get and put it out to the principals. And then I'm gonna run, you know, then they can, you know, shoot it out to the teachers. I'll just shoot what I gave you out to them. And also, and I know, and do I need to put, there's one of the things I did not put in this, of course, most teachers know, the matinee is at nine and then at twelve, that's gonna be here and I know elementary lunch. But we can still do the sack lunches right for a field trip.
We just have to, the school principal just has to get the lunch room.
What, is there a timeframe?
I believe it's two, yeah, two weeks.
Do I need to put that in corporate data?
No, they'll know that, they just need to know the time. So just make sure they know what time they can choose, whatever works best for their schedule.
Because I think we'd work around those lunches we'd have to offer that, since it's a nine and twelve o'clock performance.
Some of the elementary students go lunch really early, so even the twelve, it'd be finished.
Right, I mean, they would be able to come at the twelve o'clock performance. And it's like an hour and forty-five minutes with a fifteen, so you're looking at two hours. So if they come at twelve, they're gonna be through at two to get back to school to be able, to be on the bus. Even if you're going as far as Bear Creek, they're still gonna make it back by the time the bus is right.
Any questions for these two young ladies? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Just that out to them, that'd be great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, there's no action needed, don't call that out.
Next item on the agenda I've made is permission for U.N. Elementary School to have an after-school program.
Mr. Wedley submitted that, as you know, he's had the Twenty-First Century After-School Program. And a part of that application, you have to have a way to sustain that program when the grant goes away. So they have been charging tuition to participate in that and have some fund set aside to help offset that because their grant was not renewed. So he would like to offer that program similar to what they've been doing with a few changes after school. And he has some money, money set up to pay his teachers to work after school. And it would be very, very similar to what he's been doing. So it's an excellent opportunity as, you know, he spoke about the grades and the percentages of proficient students that he had. When you look at our two schools that had an after-school program and you look at their proficiency scores, they're very high. And I know they have an excellent staff and I know those principals do an excellent job in leading those staffs. But I have to think that the after-school program, you know, looking at the numbers, that certainly has something to do with that. So any questions on that, his request? I think it's an excellent opportunity for those students and as part of their original grant that they have to do this. So if there's not any questions, Mr. President, I'd recommend that you give permission for U.N. Elementary School to conduct a locally funded after-school program.
Okay, we entertain a motion to approve superintendent's recommendation. Make the motion. Coach Fowler makes the motion to approve it, second.
Second.
Ms. Fleming makes the second. Vote now, please. All vote out. After-school program is approved. How much was the, how much is the tuition?
It's twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars a week?
Yes, twenty dollars a week.
Next is permission to seek bids on the mobile unit.
We have an old mobile unit that's sitting off of Highway Seventeen beside the National Garden. Property that we, where we had some timber cut. And well, it's our property, it's sitting on our property, but it's beside the National Garden property. Kind of grown up and it's, it's in very good shape. That's my trip. Anyway, we need to, we need to remove that. And so we're asking that you give us permission to seek bids for that. No, I don't.
We've been there one time, nobody wanted.
Well, we're gonna try, we're gonna try again. Well, you have to go through the process. So and it's, anyway, any questions on that? It needs to be gone, it doesn't look very, very good.
I saw it the other day.
Yeah, it does, so. Not any more questions. Mr. President, I'd recommend that you give us permission to seek, seal bids on the mobile unit located off Highway Seventeen over there.
David maintains motion to approve his recommendation.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. McRae makes the motion, second.
I'll second.
Ms. Burleson makes the second, all in favor?
David could get back, bet on that thing and put him out, look, a torrent sign on it.
We've got three eyes on Coach Fowler.
He voted for it.
Next is approval, naming of the Marion County High School library.
We received a request, this board received a request in September from the U.N. City Council to rename the library at Marion County High School. The MCHS Elaine Junkin Community Library. And we had a resolution from the city making that request. We, as you know, had put a policy into place not long ago at all about how to go through that process to name a building or a room or so forth. Part of that was to process, and according to our policy, was to have a committee to review that request. We did have a committee to review that request. And the committee met on October the tenth, and there were ten members of that committee. And I wanna read you the minutes from that committee meeting. It won't take too long. The Marion County High School Naming of Building and Facilities Committee met on October the tenth, two thousand thirteen, in Marion County High School Community Library. The meeting was held to discuss the naming of the library to the MCHS Elaine Junkin Community Library. The committee read the resolution from the City of U.N. requesting the name change. It was noted in the meeting that any name change, signs, or other appropriate ways to recognize Ms. Junkin must be paid for by the City of U.N. After a short discussion, a motion was made by Mr. Bentley Crook to change the name to MCHS Elaine Junkin Community Library. A second was made by Donwell and all voted in favor of the name change. The meeting was then adjourned. And I have a signed sheet of everyone that was in attendance. And certainly want to thank those committee members that served in that role and... Any questions on that request? I know Jim, I've discussed with you, you're very familiar with it, and I think most of you are. you are very familiar with that situation, so any, any questions or discussion about that?
The, the community library was Ms. Junkin's idea, and she was always very interested in the library, and as you know, she was a person that was very active in the school, community, and church, and I feel it's appropriate to name the library, she's very deserving of that honor.
And all of that that he's talking about was in the resolution that came from the city, and I'll be glad to share that with you, if you would like to see it. But, any other questions or, or discussion? If not, Mr. President, I'd recommend that you approve the naming of the library at Marion County High School, the MCHS library, the MCHS Elaine Junkin Community Library.
Okay, superintendent recommends this name change, committee has recommended it, and entertain a motion to do so.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. McCray makes a motion.
Second.
Coach Fowler, second, all in favor?
First, all of us are affected in the meeting. Seems it's voted over.
Okay, all vote down, it is approved.
Now it's effective.
I'll hold it up.
Okay, next, from the agenda, is permission to enter into contract for substitutes.
Substitutes, yes, we, we have been greatly concerned with the new health care law, and our substitutes, we have some, some substitutes that work more than thirty hours per week, and under the new law, we would be required to provide health insurance for those substitutes. And there's a lot of details to this, Mr. Green went to an ASBO meeting probably about a month ago, and they updated them, it was discussed yesterday at superintendent meeting I attended, and there'll be a webinar, I believe it's next week, to give more details. And to try to sum it up, if, if you have employees that, that work thirty hours or more, and you do not provide health care benefits to those, then you're subject to penalties, steep penalties. And it's, the penalty is based on the number of employees that you have. So we received a sheet yesterday, and it would be a very substantial penalty for us. If you look at the number of employees we have, times about two thousand dollars for each employee, it runs up with a lot of zeros after it. So then, then the concern on our end, here in our office, is how we track that. Go back and have them look for the previous twelve months, and when, when school is not open, it, we were told it would be averaged as a forty-hour work week, so that our subs can't actually work thirty hours, you have to go back and now look at below that, because when you average twenty-five hours a week, if they're working or twenty-four, then a forty-hour week when we're not open in the summer or holidays, you're gonna approach that, and so we've looked, and we believe that it's, it's in excess of twenty employees, you know, that, that we have that have worked more than that, so under the new law, the board would have to provide for that. And as you know, with our substitutes, they're called as needed, and it's not a regular, I mean, there's, it's gonna be very difficult to track on our end, and we're greatly concerned about the possibility of making a mistake and then being assessed a fine. So based on that, and a lot of other school boards have already done this, they, they have an agency that comes in, and, and the substitutes go through them, so you as a teacher, how we want to set it up, we could continue to still use our substitutes, but we would not be employing them, the agency would be employing those, and they would be responsible for all, all of that, as far as the new health care law. There would be a slight cost to us for that, we have met with one company already to have those discussions, and what we're asking today is not, I really don't have enough information today to tell you exactly what it's gonna be, and I'll know more after the webinar next week, but we would request permission to go forward to execute a contract with the company to provide that, if we have to, if it's in the best interest of the board. We do not want to do that, we prefer to keep it the way it is, you know, so that we have, and we would have control, our, if our teachers have been, you know, they can have preferred subs, and, because you know, most of you've been in the classroom, and you have some subs that do a really good job, they're, they're used a lot, and they're called a lot, and we have some excellent subs, we have, we have certified teachers that do not have a job that are working as subs, so even in, at secondary level, we have certified math teachers that are, that serve as a sub, so they can carry on with the lessons.
Are you talking strictly to teachers now?
No, I'm not, I'm talking.
You talking about bus drivers?
Possibly.
Yeah, okay.
We'd, we'd have to.
Law substitute? Well, let's talk, let's talk about, there we got in with, when we had to pay it without all of them, you know, you know what I'm talking about?
They would not, they're not gonna be, if we execute, they will not be our employees.
Well, I know that, what I'm talking about. You said it's forty hours a week without even the school going on, what are you talking about right there? I don't understand.
It's just the way that, that the law is written, that you have to, what was explained at the ASBO meeting, when you're going back to look at the previous twelve months, if you're not open, then that week is counted as a regular work week, a forty-hour work week, which doesn't make any sense to me, but that's what they were told about a month ago. So hopefully next week, then, be a little more detailed, will come out, and we'll be able to understand it a little better, but anyway, I.
I didn't understand about the forty hour a week.
Well, that's an excellent question, and I can't really explain it, because I was not at the meeting, that's just what they were told.
Oh, you're president.
So, anyway, it's.
You know that, that's not bad.
No, but we're, you know, if you're looking at twenty, twenty-plus people.
Oh, you're talking.
That, you know, where you have to provide your health care for, then.
Hundred seventy-one thousand.
That's about a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, at the current rate of insurance per year.
And the state doesn't fund the.
Yeah, the state would fund zero on that, so you'd be totally responsible for that.
Yeah, right.
So financially, you're being forced to do this based on the new health care law. So that's what I'm saying, you know, unless they're in the, well, I'm not going there. That's all I want to say on that, but any questions, I, I mean, we, we talked about it probably a year ago, me and Clint, and we met preliminary with a company, and then about three weeks ago, we asked him to come back, and we asked more detailed questions after he'd been to his meeting, and this is something that if, if we see that's what we have to do as a board, we believe if, if we start it here this, toward the end of the month, we can have it in place by the end of the month with this, with this company, so, which would take care, take care of us with the new health care law being effective, so, did I miss anything?
What's gonna be the cost for the company to administrate? They, they gotta charge, make some money somewhere, other administrative costs.
It's gonna cost you more for, for the sub, you know, you're gonna have to pay a higher rate to them, our subs will make the same amount of money, so you're, you're basically paying the administrative fee for them to run that. They're, they're responsible then for fingerprinting and background checks and all those things that we're currently doing, so it's, it's gonna take some off of us, you know, from accounting.
It'll take more money, we're gonna pay them money.
You're gonna pay them more money than we're currently paying subs, but you're gonna pay them less money than you would be providing health care or fines.
Yeah, all right.
So when I say what's in the best interest of the board, that's what I'm talking about.
Risk avoided.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And they're taking over, you know, the background checks and fingerprinting and that, that kind of thing. And they're able to provide that to us in a format, from an accounting standpoint, that makes it easier for us to input into our software. Any, any more, any more questions on, on that? If not, Mr. President, I'd recommend that you give us permission to enter into a contract for substitutes due to potential health care penalties.
Okay, you've heard superintendent's recommendation to entertain a motion to approve it.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Fleming makes a motion to approve, second.
I'll second.
Burleson seconds that motion, all in favor, approved, superintendent's recommendation, please vote.
And that is federal penalties now, that's not even legal statements, so just make that clear.
Is it annual penalty?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is policy revisions.
You should have a handout of some deletions, and, we are, just kind of, before we get into that, we are going through our policy manual, starting with, was it A, Mr. Green, or we start with B?
I think it started with A.
Started with A, have not tackled section I or J, but, you know, or G, those are the large ones, so we're trying to go through and clean up some of the, some of the smaller sections of our policy manual, with potential changes to bring, bring to you in the future. Just, you'd ask us to do that, and we are doing that currently, and Mr. Killsworth is working on that. But these three here refer to, it's policy JFAA-R1, and, and it's, it's a form, it's a report card, and it's a report card that we, we don't use, because it refers to some programs that we're no longer using, and there's language in them, and in those two, it says, delete the references to JFAA-R1, and it was about our promotion from one grade to another, and it referred to a Readwell program that we no longer use, so we're just trying to clean that up and make that current, because those programs are not in existence for us anymore, as we've moved on to something else. Any questions on those three requests? The changes certainly will be page one, but as you look at the second page that's in your handout, if you go down and you look at, under academic grades, where it says kindergarten, it says kindergarten promotion requires the following, and it refers to that report card that we, it's not accurate, but number three, where it's where it refers to the Readwell program, and we're, we're attempting to take that in parentheses out, and to take out statement number three, because it, we don't use that program anymore. So everything else in those two large policies stays the same, that's the only, and then you've got the revised part right behind it, where you can see we took that out. Any, any questions on those? If not, Mr. President, I'd recommend that you approve the policy, three policy revisions according to your handout.
Okay, we entertain a motion in the second for, to approve these policy revisions based upon superintendent's recommendation.
I'll make the motion.
Burleson makes that motion.
I'll second.
Ms. McCray makes the second. All vote, please. All vote down, it is approved. Next is permission to review the M.A.C. program.
Uh, the MAC program, it stands for the Medicaid Administrative Claim, is what MAC stands for, and as you know, it's our AASB, runs this program, developed it, and we get reimbursed for services that we provide to our students during the school day, and this contract, we, we renew it every year, and, and they sent us a letter out, middle of September, and they found us that we need to have this executed and back to them by November one, so we can continue to participate in this program, and we just get reimbursed for things that we already do, and, Mr. Green, do you have that, do you remember off the top of your head what that amount would have been for?
I was looking that up right now.
Uh, it's in, I believe it's thirty, I'm gonna say thirty-eight, thirty-seven thousand?
Very close, thirty-six thousand, seventy-one dollars and sixty-six cents.
Okay, thirty-six thousand, so, you know, that's, that's a part of, another benefit of being a member of the AASB, that you have been for a long time, so certainly glad that they're doing that, and there's not a lot at all that we have to do, so, any questions on that, that program? If not, Mr. President, I'd recommend that you give us permission to renew the Medicaid Administrative Claim Program Contract.
Okay, superintendent recommends approval for this M.A.C. contract.
I'll make that motion.
Coach Fowler makes a motion to approve, second.
I'll second.
Fleming makes the second, vote, please.
Aye.
All members vote down, it is approved. Need to select a delegate, next item to attend the AASB Delegate Assembly.
The school board convention in December is gonna be December the fifth through the seventh in Birmingham, and they always have the delegate assembly, I believe that's on December the fifth, yes, that's correct, that assembly will be on December the fifth, and we need to select a delegate, and then we need to have an alternate to, to attend that, and certainly, I know all of you'll probably be at it anyway, but we have to, only can have one person to, to represent us as the delegate, and I believe Ms. McCray has volunteered to do that, and Mr. Fleming will be the alternate in case she's sick, does that, does that sound good? Okay, if that's the case, then, Mr. President, I'd recommend that the board appoint Belinda McCray as the delegate for the Marion County Board of Education, and Rodney Fleming as the alternate for the December two thousand thirteen Delegate Assembly.
Okay, superintendent recommends approval for our delegate and our alternate. Entertain a motion, and a second.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, Burleson makes the motion, Coach Fowler, the second it, vote, please.
Aye.
All down. All of you get to vote down, it's approved. So it's approved. Okay, it's not where you can't stand or not, all the benefits, the benefits are approved with that decision.
Oh, yeah.
Thank Ms. McCray for doing a good job in her office, district director representing us well.
Exactly right.
Next on the agenda is approval of volunteers.
We have three requests for high school students to come over to Hamilton Elementary School and volunteer to fulfill some community service hours, and they'll be in just different classrooms, and always under the supervision of a certified teacher, and, Mr. President, I'd recommend that you approve the volunteer request for Hamilton Elementary School.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation to approve these student volunteering, sounds like a good program, so entertain a motion to do so.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. McCray makes a motion, second.
Second.
Coach Fowler makes the second, all in favor, please vote. All down, it is approved. Review of field trips is next item.
We have a handout with three requests. One request is from Brilliant Elementary School for a trip with fifth and sixth grade students to be held May the eleventh through the sixteenth, and that field trip is to different, different sites within the state, I think this is the first time that we've had a school try to do this, and some, thought it was an excellent, excellent plan, giving you an opportunity to review that, the, then the other two requests come from Marion County High School, which one of the trips on November the eighteenth, and the other on November the twenty-sixth. The second request there, or the first request from Marion County High School is with the use of private vehicles, and the number participating on that trip exceeds that, is allowed by our policy, so I'll ask you to approve it, but under the condition that they ride a school bus to that event. Any questions on those three requests? Any questions on those three requests? If not, Mr. President, I'd recommend that you approve the three field trip requests according to your handout, with the trip request from Marion County High School on November the eighteenth be amended if they be required to ride a school bus.
Okay, heard the superintendent's recommendation concerning these three field trips. Motion to approve. Fleming makes a motion, second. Miss Burris seconded, all in favor, please vote. All vote out, is approved. Personnel.
We have one sheet, and this time of the year, people are small with just a few action items. Two resignations, one of those being our secretary, one of their secretaries here in our office, child nutrition secretary, and then a lunchroom manager, Mike Phillips. And then we have two leave requests from support staff requesting family medical leave, and then one employment of a secretary of Hamilton Elementary School. Any questions or discussions on, on those? I'd like to take those, or the motion unless there's an issue. And then permission, my request would also include permission to post a place on things if we have something unexpected occur before our next meeting. No questions, discussion, Mr. President, I'd recommend that you approve the personnel action items listed on your personnel sheet.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve, approve these personnel items based on superintendent's recommendation.
I'll make the motion.
Miss McCray makes the motion, second. Coach Fowler makes the second, all in favor of this recommendation. Good guy, is approved.
Uh, Mr. President, that's all the items I've laid on our agenda. I have just a few things I'd like to go over with you before we adjourn for today. As already mentioned by, I think, one of our professors, this October is statewide parent visitation month, and our school district has an opportunity to take a leadership role in encouraging and enhancing parental involvement in their, in the education of their children by participating in Better Together Home and School Partnership through Alabama Statewide Parent Visitation Month. This month is an opportunity for parents and the community to show their support for public education, our schools, teachers, students, and learning. We all know that parent involvement in their children's education means children learn more, and that's exactly what we all want. In fact, we have worked for years to get greater parental involvement in their children's education. Alabama Statewide Parent Visitation Month is an opportunity for us to help make this happen, and I want to again commend Mr. McCarty in Breen Elementary School for having a hundred grandparents visit their school the other day and have lunch with their, with their grandchildren. Certainly be commended for that. I'd like to recognize, Ms. McCray, at this time, as Jim mentioned a little earlier, she, she serves as our Director of District Seven, AASB, but she has, and you all go to professional development opportunities that provide for AASB, but she has achieved a level four status with, through AASB's School Board Member Academy Achievements, and she will be receiving a plaque at the December convention. They didn't send it to me, I presented it. So congratulations to you for that. I, I gave you a sales tax update that, as you look back with all FY13 now concluded, and you look all the way back, we have six years listed of sales tax data, and you can look back to FY08, and in FY13, we had one point four-four million dollars, and FY08, we had one point four-one. So we actually had, you know, and every time we talk about our budgets, we refer back to the '08 budget year, the best budget year we had, and so when we compare, and that's the first year, as you look at those totals across the bottom, the first year that we've been at or above our FY08, so, which is up about seventy-two thousand dollars, so that's really, and that's from last year, but going back to '08, we're up about twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars from '08, so very encouraging to see that, and again, as you look at that, through that year, I think we had two, two out of twelve months that it was down from the previous year, but overall, it was up, so it's very encouraging. Next week, October twenty-first through the twenty-fifth, is School Bus Safety Week, and we shared that with our principals. Again, like to recognize our, our transportation department, and our bus drivers, our mechanics, every report we get from the state when they come in and inspect our buses, they don't find anything, everything is exactly right, operating as it should, and that's, that's a compliment to Mr. Bromley and his staff, but also to our bus drivers that, that are driving down small roads, running bus routes before daylight, picking up children, and always on the lookout for cars that drive by when the, when the stop sign is out and the lights are flashing. So just, just a time for us and, and hopefully the paper to recognize school bus safety week and to call attention to notice the yellow, big yellow bus riding down the road, and to have caution around that. As Clint's trying to get video screen out, I know everybody's watching. I, I want to talk to you, I met the other day with, there's a new director, for advanced ed in the state of Alabama, and I know about three years ago, we'd talked about looking at district accreditation, and so I met with him for about an hour and a half to discuss that and the process that would take for us to do that. Just kind of, it's a pretty long process to go through before the visit takes place, but if we decided to do that, it would save us money because it would, it would cost less from the district stand because you'd have one team come in and visit instead of having, like Gary talked to you about having, they're up for review this year, so there's a cost for that team to come in, and next year maybe three other schools, so every year we're, we're paying a team to come in and visit for that accreditation, so overall it would save us money. And it's just something I, and I would like to pursue, I, I know it's going to be hard, I don't know that right now is, is exactly the time, we're spending a lot of time at Hagerburg and trying to work out all that, but I, I just wanted to get your feedback today, is that, is that something that you want us to look at, trying to pursue as a district accreditation?
I do.
Everybody's kind of been bringing, all right, I'll, I'll get some more details from, from Dr. Wigg and bring that back to you, maybe at the next meeting, and may ask you to take action on that, and I'll talk to him about the timeframe, because I think once we take more action, we've got like a twenty-four month window to get that, get the visit in, so that, that would work, should work for us, but anyway, I just want to get your feedback on that. Are we ready to go, Mr. Green?
I hope so.
Wait.
He's been stalling for you.
I've got this, yeah, I've been, I have. All right, and I'm on this new operating system over here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I may let you watch him on my face if I can. Well, I don't see it. Technical difficulties, we'll be there in just a second. Well, we'll back over and see.
I've got some pictures I can show on the way.
Well, there's some of those on here as well. Not picking danger. Behind home plate on the baseball field, looking, looking to the south, and you can see the, the west end of the building up on the hill, that's the elementary end that Ms. Palmer was talking about, and then where that white vehicles parked behind that, would be up on that hill would be the elementary playground, and then when we start to pan this to the right, there's going to be the softball field, and then the baseball field, and the field house as we come on around. I'm just letting it load for a second, so. And then that's the drive, you can see, that, that would be the parent drive to come around and drop off students in the morning, and our buses will be, there's a big road out behind the building that'll be for our buses to run and deliveries to the lunchroom. Those are dugouts on the softball field, and there's dirt piled everywhere, you're going to see, but digging footage and so forth. That's the dugout there in the baseball field. You've got side down on the softball and the baseball fields. The concrete slab is poured on the field house, that's another slab for the first base dugout. Should have some blocks around, I don't know how many blocks in this, and there's some blocks stacked up on the other end, and I told you all I was going to try to slow down, but just try to do a good job. The concession stand on the other end, there's some blocks stacked up, and then there's a stack or two, but then the parking lot, and they're moving some of the dirt out in front of the school, but you can see that's some of the first floor walls coming up, and then they'll actually set the second level floor will be, come in pre-filled, and it'll part of it, and it'll set on top of those blocks, and then they'll pour up, I think it's the three or four inch slab on top of that that comes in, and then you'll go up for the, for the second floor on that. I started this video, but it didn't, too many bars in the way, so I did it again. This is the, the lunchroom, cafeteria where our students will be eating. I'm going to let it load up in just, just a minute. So I've not been poured yet, that's the elementary gym, and that's the waterproofing that's underneath that, so water doesn't come up through the concrete to the floor. And those are classrooms right there, you can see, that's a hallway coming from the front door all the way out the back, that's a library that's a freshly poured area with the office up in front to the left, and then there's your additional classrooms once it loads up.
And the football field is, are they going, they got, put new lights and everything up on it?
Yes, yeah, matter of fact, we've had to delude some of the lights, I noticed up there yesterday, some of the lights are already there on the ground.
What about the bleachers there? Why aren't we going to take place on that old football field?
Oh, you've got a press box being constructed up behind, and I, you couldn't see that on the video, it's coming up, if you remember, there's a bank. November, what about November the twentieth, that's the week before we're out for Thanksgiving, does anybody have a problem with that testing?
Doctor's appointment at nine fifteen.
Okay. I guess out of, out of bounds.
At Winfield, so I mean, if we met later, it should be at Winfield. Is that nine fifteen at Winfield?
Do you have to have it on Wednesday every time?
Well, I don't, but trying to work with everybody's work schedule with the teachers' classes and so forth, that's, that will probably, you're thirteenth, twentieth, oh. Belinda, what's, where are your classes at?
Tuesdays and Thursdays.
You work Tuesdays and Thursdays? Yeah.
I work Mondays and Thursdays.
Oh, you.
Come on, dude.
So, so there you go, there's your Wednesday.
According to this writing.
I work five days a week.
I'm going to be, I'm going to be there at a clock.
If we made it ten thirty, you think it'd be okay? Would ten thirty be okay on the, on the twentieth? Is everybody? We'll have December, December the twentieth, that's ten thirty.
No, no.
I'm sorry. I'm skipping Christmas on Tuesday. November the twentieth, eleven twenty at ten thirty. Any other questions or comments or discussion? If not, Mr. President, I'd recommend that we adjourn now of the meeting.
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Miss McCray, motion, second.
No, second.
Miss Burris, second, said motion to adjourn, all in favor. All vote out.
We'll have our high school principals, we'll be in the meeting room to see how things are going.